Twenty twenty three. This is the Select Board of the Town of Bolton. Uh, first up on our agenda is a consideration of application of the International Beverage Service Company LLC for the change of manager to Mr. Tony Giannetti of Holyoke, Massachusetts, for the existing annual all-club alcoholic beverage which is licensed at the International. One fifty nine Ballville Road, Kelly Cardo's, Avalon Consulting, are you with us?
Yes.
Kelly, how are you?
I'm good. How are you, sir?
Doing well, thank you. Doing well.
So, as you know, my name is Kelly Derpy Cardoza. I'm with Avalon Consulting Group, and I'm representing the International Beverage Service Company. Um, Mr. Tony Giannetti is with me. He's a member of the club's Executive Operating Committee and the club's Director of Membership. The International Beverage Service Company holds an all-club alcoholic license at the International. The former manager is no longer with the company, and so we're here seeking your approval as the local licensing authority to institute Mr. Giannetti as the manager for the liquor license.
Sounds good to me. I have no questions. Bob, do you?
Um, just to have all um the the forms and um fees been paid to the town administrator?
Yes, so all
All the paperwork, uh, all the required paperwork is in order.
Then I have no um, no issues. So I will then make a motion.
I'll take a motion to approve?
I will uh, make a motion to approve the um uh, change of manager at the International Beverage Service Company LLC to Mr. Tony Giannetti.
I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
Waizaki?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Welcome to Bolton, Mr. Giannetti.
Thank you very much.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have a number of sign approvals. Uh, the first one is for ten ninety-two Main Street for a company called Deckit. Do we have anyone attending from that organization?
So the, the um, sign company called me yesterday and said that a representative from the business would not be here today, but um, they told me that someone from Sinorama would be here. They didn't tell me a name, but I don't see anyone in the audience. Uh, somebody's just joining. Let's see. This is the right person. Alyssa, are you here from Sinorama?
Maybe not.
Um, Alyssa, we, we can't hear you. I don't know if you're muted. Alyssa, are, are you from Sinorama? Uh, I have a chat that says, yes, I am. Uh, can you speak to us, Alyssa? My microphone isn't working. I'm trying. Okay. Alright, um. I will um. I guess I will do um the interpreting here.
Well, I mean, I mean, the sign, the sign looks fine. I mean, we, we have a picture of it, and I think it fits within the requirements of uh, uh, signage. I guess they are just putting on the front where all the other signs are.
Yeah, I, I don't see any, I don't have any issue with the sign. It seems to conform to all of our uh, requirements. So I will make a motion to approve the sign for Deckit at ten ninety-two Main Street.
I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
Waizaki?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up.
Thanks for showing up, Alyssa. Sorry, it didn't work out better.
Sorry.
Have a good night.
No, that's, that's, that's most of the battle, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's great. Uh, next up is a request uh, for six twenty-six Main Street, Bolton Dance Studio changed to sign, changed the sign word to Robert Di Benedetto.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Good evening. How are you this evening? Yes.
Great. Uh, yes, I'm Robert Di Benedetto. This is my wife, Toni Agdorian.
You, you've been before us before, haven't you?
So I guess you were, yes. Yes, it was Bolton Dance Studio, and then you want it to be center now?
Uh, it was um.
Main Street Dance Center, and now it will be Bolton Dance Center.
Okay. And that's just basically the only change? Everything else is pretty much the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, well, I will move to approve the uh change in the name of the sign at six twenty-six Main Street to Bolton Dance Studio.
Uh, Bolton Dance Center.
Bolton Dance Center, sorry. I was reading the wrong piece of paper.
No worries.
It's okay.
Uh, I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
Waizaki?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, next up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, good luck. Uh, another sign at six twenty-six Main Street. Uh, request for a sign, uh, six twenty-six yoga, uh, six-by-four sign on the building in addition to the existing sign board. Frank Patterson, are you with us? Say, Frank, how are you?
Good, Stan. How you doing?
Good, good, good.
You can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Um. Do you have an actual sign or, or what you have here is just sort of a, uh, it's scribbled on a picture?
Uh, you know, yeah, that was last minute.
An actual picture of the sign or?
I don't have an actual picture of the sign. It's basically like the other signs that I have on the building, uh, nature and nurture sign. I, to be honest, I'm waiting to, um. I'm waiting to, to, to figure it out, but it's gonna be the same white plastic board with the white trim respectable, just like the one on the front. But we're just trying to figure out the best size, and I haven't got nothing to do it.
Are you gonna use the same font as the other size, sizes, signs rather?
Uh, but the, the font, uh, the font will be the same on the, on the marquee in the front on one seventeen. And the one on the back, it's gonna be, uh, yeah, the font on the front will be just what, what we uh, put on there. Yoga six-two-six and then yoga hot Pilates on the sideboard. And then the sign, the back of the building will be, um. The, the background will be a light blue and the lettering will be in white.
Okay.
Yeah, if there's no other ornamentation, I think that'll be fine.
Yeah, no, nothing else. That's all.
Yeah, now. Frank, I, I recall that on the, yeah, that you had you had a, had one extension, I think it was coffee, that was sort of on a side.
Yeah, that was on the front.
And I don't know if you, I, I didn't notice if you replaced that after the sign got.
So we ever. We haven't replaced the coffee on the front uh, box yet because the boys are waiting until they open the restaurant. They may put something different in that one instead of coffee.
Okay. Alright, so you're.
So they'll apply for that when they open their restaurant.
Okay. Alright, I'm, I'm okay with that. Bob, are you alright with it?
Yeah, so I will um, make a motion to approve um, at six twenty-six Main Street, a six-by-four-foot sign for uh, six twenty-six yoga on the building and in addition to the existing sign board uh, as presented in the package for tonight.
Excellent. I promise it'll be respectable.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor signify. Are you saying aye, aye?
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
Waizaki?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Appreciate it.
Thanks for all you guys do, Aunt Lady. Take care.
Take care. Alright, next up is uh, Department of Public Works update. First is the library sewer repair project. Randy, are you with us?
He is with us.
Maybe not.
I saw him in there a second ago.
Yeah, he's.
Yeah, he's there. He's just being shy.
Well, I know I, I, I'm having trouble internet-wise, so uh, maybe he is as well.
Yeah, me, me, yeah, me too as well. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You can't hear me?
You can hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Yeah, and I can't see you, but that's okay. So we'll figure, we'll figure it, we'll figure out something here. Alright.
So you wanna give us the, the, the?
Thank you very much. The library sewer. Thank you for inviting me this evening.
Sure.
Um, as you know, uh, we've had a longstanding problem at the library with the wastewater.
Am I the only one not hearing him?
Yeah, Randy, you dropped out.
He said he's gonna try to log in again.
Okay.
Yeah, I have almost no signal. So something's going on.
Yeah, you, you, Stan, you're, you're definitely going in and out, but we're able to follow you.
Uh, this is not good.
Alright, he's back again.
Can you hear me now?
Randy.
Alright, it's a little bit more successful anyway.
Start again, starting again. Thank you very much for making the time tonight to uh, discuss a couple of projects going on. Um, as you are all aware, uh, we had a, we have a fairly significant wastewater issue at the uh, at the library. It's been going on for a number of years, and last year we decided to uh, proceed with the design for the repair of the project which involves replacing the sewer line under the floor of the building and relocating it outside the building. Um. We hired an engineer, we put the project out for bid, uh, the specs together, put it out for bid. We received no, no bids. No interest. There was some, uh, some of the specs did go out. We received no feedback um, from them, and we received no bids. Um, this past winter, when I was uh, dealing with a insurance claim at the public safety building, I happened to mention to our adjuster about the problems at the library. And he says, oh, maybe we can solve that for you. We can help you, or we can help you with it. It's okay. So they had their general contractor look at the projects along with their subs, um, plumbers, um, demolition people, et cetera, restoration people. And they presented a price to the town, um. Our portion of the cost would be about eighty-four thousand dollars. Um, hundred and eighty-four thousand, excuse me, about a hundred thousand dollars more than what we had anticipated. So we're looking, if we want to proceed with this project, um. I'm gonna, going to need an additional appropriation. One of the things, um. You know, I'd like to say about the project, it's, it's in, in the eyes of a general contractor, it's a pretty small project. And um, there's no real money to be made by any one specific trade, and there's a number of trades in involved in this project. There's the plumbers. There's the um, general contractor. There's a excavating company for outside the building. There's painters. There is carpenters. There is tile, um, flooring people. Tile and, and carpet. And each one of these small components, there's, there's not a lot. In fact, um, the general contractor for the insurance company did not like the first price that they got from the first plumber. And they went to different plumbers to try and get a better price, which they ended up doing. But it's still um a scary project, scary high project. Um, I was fiberglassed when I received the towns, what the towns portion of the project would be. Um, there are a couple of advantages to proceeding down this route. Um. Again, I mentioned there's no you know, there's, there's so many trades involved that the profit margins, you know, magnify upon each other. This general contractor, it's not big enough for a, any kind of a general contractor that wants to take on a small project. Uh, we would have to go through the bidding process again. Um, we uh, we are paying prevailing wage that is required, so we, we would pay the contractor prevailing wage. All the work would be coordinated through the insurance company's general contact, general contractor, um, who is insured, and portion of the cost, I think it's around twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars um, of the project is gonna be covered by the town's insurance company. And everybody looks frozen, so I don't know if I.
Nope.
No, you're, you're fine.
Signal again or not.
No, shock and awe, that's all it is. So basically, what you're saying is, is we have to find another
Okay.
Close, close to a hundred grand.
Yes, that's what he's saying. Um, hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars plus a ten percent contingency line is what he's recommending.
I'm not, I didn't catch your question.
No, I, I, basically, you, you're, we, we've got a hundred, about a hundred thousand dollars allocated for this. We need, we need almost another hundred thousand dollars. Is what you're telling us.
You need almost a hundred five thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
The exact number is a hundred and three thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Alright, well, uh, uh, we, we're, we're not gonna find that.
An additional appropriation of a hun- hundred.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Randy.
Yeah. If Randy had completed that sentence, the uh, the number that we reviewed this morning in our meeting was a hundred and three thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars.
I'm not, I, I, I don't have.
Alright, well, uh, we, we're, we're not gonna be finding that kind of money anytime soon, so we're gonna have to uh, this is either gonna have to be some um, I would assume whom, article on some warrant at some point in time.
Um, you, you, you would either make an, an additional appropriations uh, through ARPA, um, which is what I assumed we would do tonight, or, or it would need to be an article at a future town meeting.
That, well, I mean, I, I'm assuming we have, we have funds that we can, we can tap from ARPA, correct?
We do. Uh, Randy and, and Ashka and I got together this morning, and based on the uh, meeting we had this morning, um, assuming you approved this for ARPA funds, we would um still have a little under three hundred thousand dollars remaining in ARPA funds.
Okay. I, I mean, is, is there one or more areas where the, the, basically the cost is double? Where, where, where are the pain points here?
I um, I did not get a breakdown. I requested a breakdown from the contractor. And it was kinda extremely hard to follow. Um, it wasn't a typical breakdown that we typically see. Um. We provided them a, a listing or a breakdown of how we broke up the, the project. And um they did supply, looking for it here.
There's, thi- this is, this is a lot of money. But
An awful lot of money.
When we went to do, when we went to do this on our own, we got no responses at all. And at least now we've got someone bonded. We've got the insurance company overseeing it. Presumably, if there's any more issues, the, the insurance company is gonna have some responsibility. And uh, it's painful, but I if, if we pass up this opportunity, there's no guarantee those prices are gonna go down.
I'm not suggesting we don't do the work. It's just, it just seems to be quite amazing that the price has doubled. Now, uh.
Well, I don't know what we based the price on before.
I, I, well, I don't know either, but I uh, I would have to assume that, that we we brought in someone to do some estimation. Did, did we not done, or did we just do this on our own?
No, Randy spoke with, with, with tradespeople to try to get a sense for um, for where it would come in, and, and we believed it was a reasonable estimate. Um. When, when Randy showed me the figure of a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, my first question to him was, well, how, how much of that is, is our responsibility? And he said, that is our responsibility, that that's how surprised I was along with Randy. Um. But you, you, you can see the, where costs are escalating all over the place. Um. It's, it, it's extremely hard to uh forecast pricing these days. Uh, it, it's just crazy. If, you know, between uh, material costs and contractors having a lot of work to do. And as Randy said, you know, when they start bidding on it, you know, there's no chunk that is particularly large for any one trade uh, discipline here, so. And it's a relatively small job for uh, for a lot of contractors, so um, we're, we're kind of at their mercy, I think, right now.
There, there's, you'll, you'll sometimes see i- i- when, when they're flush with work, contractors will sometimes give you a high price because they, they'd rather spend their time someplace else. Again, this is a small job for many trades.
Well, um, I, I guess we, we can, we can talk about it at some other point in time. I'm, I'm fine to authorize the money, but given the fact that it's the, it's the drainage pipe, that's, that's difficulty. Why is it that we have to tear up the bathroom? Cause I'm hearing carpet, I'm hearing tile and all that kind of stuff. Why aren't, why aren't they just digging outside and tapping from the existing pipe to the new? And not serving the bathroom at all?
Randy? Couple of, couple of things. Um, the original cost that I got was from the designer that the town hired, who was the original mechanical plumbing designer for the building. We hired him. And he's the original estimate of a hundred thousand. Um, the reason they have to excavate the floor is because the sewer line is a slab on grade. And the sewer line settled under the slab. There is no access from below, and the settlement is in the building. There's actually two areas of significant settlement. One of them is between, in the hallway between the program room and the library, between the two bathrooms. There's a settlement there. The second settlement we found was between the technology closet and, and the dirt library director's office is under that floor. Both of them are under the slab. So I, cheapest and most effective way of getting at it is to cut the slab, relay that pipe, and bring the pipe directly outside. So we won't have, we're minimizing this from happening again by removing a whole bunch of, you know, three-quarters of the building with underground piping under the slab with no access.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine. We, we need to get it done, so if we need to tap into ARPA money, let's just do that. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Alright, I wanna.
I don't like it, but I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm not happy about this either, but it's gotta get done. Um, I uh, moved to authorize an additional uh, one, one hundred and three thousand, um.
One hundred and fifteen.
Hundred fifteen dollars of um ARPA money for the library project.
I'll second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
Waizaki?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Randy.
No, for the record, I was shocked at the number as well, so for the record.
Yeah, that was definite shock and awe.
Well, some of the other things I've heard uh, the last day or two, this, this doesn't surprise me uh, about all this stuff. So, yeah, it, it is what it is, unfortunately. Alright, next up is um, uh, an update and a little discussion on the pay-as-you-throw transition from the stickers to the bags. Um, I know that's, that is in process.
Yeah, we're still proceeding.
Uh, what, early February?
Uh, we're. We're, we're still proceeding um, down the path from the guidance provided to the board to transition fully for July first. Residents have been turning in stickers, and we've been swapping them up for bags. Um. We uh are in the process of ordering signage that we posted um, saying that after July first, that only uh, colored green and orange bags would be permitted.
Okay. Are you seeing, are you seeing any, any particular issues? Randy, right now?
Um, you know, the staff has had some feedback from the residents. Um, nothing extraordinary or nothing out of the ordinary that um, I can report as being, but you know, the residents are having some difficulty understanding why they can't use their stickers, um. Uh, use them up. Um. But we, we, we're, we're working through it. The, the staff is, is, is is being good about it, and they're, you know, swapping the stickers and saying, you know, hey, you know, they're just working with the rules that have been provided.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say the single biggest pushback we get are, not pushback, that sounds strong. Uh, the single biggest question we get is why can't people use their stickers beyond July first before they transition to bags?
Well, I, it's pretty simple. Yeah, we wanna have a cutoff date so that, that the folks at the transfer station, the DPW workers definitely know that it's the residents that are using the bags. And you know, we, we did this, we did this a while ago, and it is, I mean, in a couple of days, it's gonna be April first, and between April first and July first is three months. Uh, and individuals can use their stickers up and through July first. Um, so I think there's plenty of time to, for everybody to, to make the swap if they need to make the swap towards the end. I mean, this is not like we're, we're telling people you can't do anything tomorrow.
Right.
So.
Jenny and Kristen have done a very good job explaining that to people.
Yeah. Uh, we've also had a couple of individuals, and one individual wrote a letter to us about contractor bags or forty-two gallon bags. I, I had Jenny research, and I, I don't have it with me a, at the moment, but the original intent for the two stickers was green was for a thirteen gallon, uh, typically a white trash bag, kitchen trash bag. And the orange sticker was for a thirty-to-thirty-three gallon you know, larger bag. And that, that was on a, a document that she provided to me. I think it was back from two thousand and six or two thousand and nine. So there was never any intent to allow any wide range of bag size, and certainly not forty-two gallon contractor bags. Um. And, you know, I, I, I don't think we, we, a- as long as we've had the program, those are the two sized bags that we would allow with the two stickers. Uh, so if people were using larger contractor bags, uh, you know, they were able to throw away a lot more garbage than what the, what they were paying for, so. Uh, at this point in time, I, I don't think we should be considering adding a third bag. At some point in time, if we wanna consider that, we can. I believe there are options for that. But we have issues in terms of storage and, and the like. Uh, and for all these years, the program seemed to work pretty well with those two sized bags, and for a few people who are using much larger bags, and I know one individual who wrote to us had been using forty-two gallon bags since nineteen ninety-five. So he's gotten quite a deal. Uh, but I think uh, that's something we can possibly look at in the future. Uh, but I think, uh, that's something we can possibly look at in the future, but I'm, I'm not sure I'm. Uh, right now, at least at this point in time, interested in introducing a third. Colored bag into the mix, I don't know about you, Bob, but, uh.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm fine with the current arrangement.
Right, and, you know, if they have a lot of garbage, then they use two bags, uh, which is what they should have been using all along, so. Um, I'm fine with that and I think, you know, we'll. We'll, w- we need to have a discussion in terms of moving forward, you know, obviously we, we renew the program for seniors every year. Uh, and we'll probably have that discussion probably, you know, in the, in the, one of the upcoming meetings to just, uh. Uh, reinstitutionize that program, uh, since we do it, we vote on that every year, so. Uh, other than that, I mean, Bob, do you have any, any questions or concerns or?
No, I, I think.
Anything you, you know, talking to.
Transfer station, there are things that come up and. Um, you know, I, I think Randy's done a good job of, of directing them and, and. Handling it and. You know, I, I, we expected some bumps in the road. So none of this is surprising, but, but there's, there have been no showstoppers and. Um, we'll just continue to see how it goes for, you know, till July first.
Yep, sounds good.
I think, um. I, I think like we discussed previously too, maybe in June. Uh, may have an extra staff person up there or a volunteer or something like that to assist and.
Yep.
You know, swapping out stickers, something like that and. And maybe after July first, another person there to just be, stay at the compactors and just. Work with people that are trying to use stickers, trying to use up their stickers. Um, explain to them that, you know, as of July first, it's, it's bags that. You know, we'll come up with a policy there, but you know, it's, it's going to be, we'll, we'll transition people into it, I mean, that's, that's the goal.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good, thanks Randy, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, next up on our agenda. Uh, is a discussion, uh, concerning lots seven and eight Meadow Road. Uh, map four dot D parcel one oh one and one oh one point one, a request from Dilson Roy to install drainage structures. In the right of way. Uh, it says Ryan Proctor, are you with us? And I know Todd, I, I. Thank you for, uh, taking time out to, uh, uh. Join this portion of the meeting, I know you, uh, Todd, you and I spoke, uh, last week on this particular item, so.
Correct.
Yep. So do we have someone from, uh, Dilson Roy or, uh?
Ryan's here with us. Yeah, Ryan Proctor from Dilson Roy here, um, and the owner, uh, Mohammed Al Hassan is, uh, on, on this call as well.
Hello, this is Mohammed Al Hassan.
Good evening.
Good evening, guys.
Very good. Um, I, I know this project is new, before you would like me to do a, a brief overview, I'm happy to share my screen if that would be helpful.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, I mean, I've talked to, to Todd about it, but perhaps, uh, for, 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 uh, Bob and some of the other folks, just a, a quick overview might be, might be helpful.
Absolutely, um, Jenny, do I have the ability to share my screen?
I can give that to you one moment.
Thank you.
Alright, you should be all set.
Alright. Okay, so I've got the site plan up here. Um, as. E- everyone can see the screen here with the plan?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so as mentioned, the, um, property we're looking at is lot seven and eight Meadow Road, which is identified as, um, map four D parcels one oh one and one oh one point one. We have been working with the planning board through the shade tree and scenic road hearing process, um, for several months now. Um, there's been a few iterations of the plan, um, it is a shared driveway providing access to two A and R lots. And among the discussions relative to the tree removal and the removal of the stone wall. A partial removal of the stone wall, which is the nature of the scenic road hearing. There have been several concerns relative to drainage entering the roadway. Which is one of the design criteria for a shared driveway. Um, so the shared driveway, as we have it laid out now, is going to be a switchback off of Meadow Road and we have several. Up gradient, um, stormwater controls, including a stormwater basin. Um, a stone recharge trench and then what we're here for tonight. Um, is at the bottom of the driveway here, we have two catch basins just below the existing stone wall. Um, that will capture runoff coming down the driveway around the switchback and then discharging to an existing swale along Meadow Road. Uh, we do propose some re-grading of that swale and then, um, installing that in a French dr- with a French drain. Um, to encourage the stormwater to flow towards an existing Albert Culvert, um, to the west, down, uh, west of Meadow Road. Um, so that's a very brief overview, um, I, I know you've, um. You said you had some, um, you heard some, you've talked to some people about the project, so I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions or comments that you may have at this time.
Well, I, I guess this is, this is Stan, I mean, from my perspective, uh. Uh, I guess the, the issue is. Uh, drainage control in the, the town's right of way.
Yep.
Is that not correct, Todd?
That's, I'm sorry.
That is correct, sir, yes.
Yeah, and, uh. So you, you, you want to put this in the town's right of way, so it, it then becomes. Uh, I guess the town's responsibility. Uh, down the road to maintain this, um. Uh, and I, I don't know if you've had any conversations with, uh. With our DPW director, but, uh, I mean. Your, your issue to mitigate is to put the onus down on the town to maintain this for, forever, so. I guess that's where, um. Uh, seems to be a bit of an issue. And I guess all, just, just the, the magnitude of the, the amount of stone wall you want to take down. And the number of trees you want to cut for a shared driveway, it seems excessive, but that's another, another topic for another day, but right now we're here about the, uh. The structures that are, uh, being proposed to be put in the towns right away. And who, who is going to maintain that over time?
Yeah, so the, these structures, as well as the upgrading structures, the basin and, and the stone trenches will be part of a shared driveway agreement when the lots are conveyed. Um, so the intent is to have them maintained by the future homeowners of the property. And that'll be in an operation and maintenance agreement that is deeded to the properties and referenced in the, in the future deeds of the site.
Including the stuff that's in the town right away?
That's right, yes, sir. So, so my understanding, the, the way we left it with the planning board, I think it was last week or two weeks ago, um. We are not here tonight seeking site plan approval, we are seeking permission to install the structures within the right of way. And then location and sizing and any of the design controls are going to be worked out with the planning board. And Todd, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that was my understanding after the last meeting with.
That's, that's correct, that's correct.
Chairman, I'm not. A lawyer, obviously.
So maybe this is a silly question, but I've never seen something like this before, so how can something that's in the town right of way be deeded? Just to a third party?
Yeah.
Um, that, that has been one of the concerns, um, and I know we've talked about this with Randy and with the planning board as well, um. This is a, this is the first for me also, so I, I guess I'm here seeking, um, guidance as, as much as we are, um. A verbal approval, I suppose.
Well, uh. Given that question, given that question from Mr. Lowe, I don't think you're going to get any verbal approval tonight about anything.
Well, e- even if it's deeded to the landowners. When the town thinks something to be, needs to be done. There's no mechanism to force the landowners to respond. Even if the landowners have responsibility for it, there's nothing that's going to. Force them ten, fifteen, you know, the second or third landowners down the road. Is going to force them to respond if the town feels that this is not properly maintained. And the town has no recourse, there's nothing in our bylaws to deal with something like this. So. A- a- aside from the question of can you do it, can, you know, how, how can the, the deed include it? I don't see where it's in any way enforceable. And. It's unacceptable from, from that point of view, from, to me.
Yep.
Chairman, per- perhaps, uh.
Mr. Proctor could provide the town with some proposed wording. You know, to support the concept that he's got here, we could have council review it, but. Other than that, I, I think you're talking at a, a very abstract level.
Well, you, well, be, before, before we go down that path, I, I. Think that this would be an unfortunate precedent. If the town resources are now involved in dealing with. All kinds of new construction runoff. And I think it would be unfortunate. To, to proceed with this and, and the reason I'm bringing that up is I, I, I don't know that. Even if there's a deed. Even if there's a legal way to do this, that the town wants to do this, I, I think this is a bad precedent.
I, I show your concern, Bob. I, I really do.
Um, you know, we, we've seen before, once you. Uh, allow someone to do something. Uh, you think it's a one-off, but someone else goes, well, my project's the same except for this small detail. And now you're in a situation where you've, um. Uh, you've got a. You really don't have any control over, over what's happening. So I think this is, this is a bad precedent to set, to set.
I understand.
There's no other way to, to deal with the water onsite?
We're, we're dealing with them, with a large portion of it, um, we, we did do stormwater analysis, um, comparing the pre and post-developed runoff rates. We are reducing the amount of stormwater leaving the site. Um, however, Bolton's bylaw, uh, stipulates that. A new driveway cannot discharge any stormwater into a right of way and this site is very steep, um. Approximately a two to one slope coming right off Meadow Road. And the right of way line, uh, which is this dark line here right on the stone wall, and I'm tracing with my cursor here, is the property line. And the edge of the road is thirty feet down, so there, there's a large. There's a lot of real estate, uh, between the edge of the road and the property line that is town property. Um, so capturing all that stormwater is proving to be challenging.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have to agree with everything that, that, that Bob said, I think this, this is kind of a dangerous precedent. Um, for the town to be doing this and also. Um, I, I don't see what mechanism we have to be able to enforce it, even if we did do it. And I, I don't, I don't know how you can, you can deed something that the town owns to somebody else. That's, that's the third piece. So.
I mean, when we talked with the DPW director, he, he actually didn't have that much of an issue.
Um, that's not entirely accurate, uh, the DPW director did say and the board has a memo to that effect that he would want to see all of. All of the, um. All of the appropriate bylaws, um, followed. Um, which are applicable bylaws, which, which includes the water runoff into the road and. When, and, um, he also did have concerns about, as both select board members have said. Going forward, the, the, the town will be responsible for the maintenance, um, and or replacement of those structures over time. So it, it's a liability that the town is assuming. Or, or would assume, I should say.
Yes.
Randy has his hand up.
Yes, Randy.
Yeah, I just, um, want to state that I have been out there multitude of times, um, we met with Ryan. And, um, Mr. Hassan, I don't know, two or three times as well, um. Going back and forth, a- and I'm not comfortable with the structures that are in the right of, in the right of way, I mean. The regulations say no water onto the pavement, not the right of way, um. He's, the design tries to control that, I'm not comfortable with the structures in the right of way, but if there was a way to. Ensure that they're going to be maintained, I, 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 I've made it clear all along, I didn't want to maintain them. Because especially if there's a problem, it's going to happen in the winter time. And it's going to be, ultimately, we're going to be the ones in there trying to fix it because. The homeowners that are there are, it's going to be ten or fifteen years down, down the road, they, none of the maintenance has been done. Um, they have no, um, desire. To do, to take care of it because they're minimally impacted where it's the, the traveling public on Meadow Road that is. Is, is going to be most impacted by an icing situation. Um, so, uh, that, I mean, we. Myself and member of the planning board and, and Rebecca too, we, we met individually, just having a, like a brainstorming session, see if we could come up with other ideas and. And it goes back to my memo to the board where I said, this lot is not. Unusual compared to several other lots on this, on this stretch of road that were all created by the NR process. Um, there's a existing lot, I think, two next door where. Um, water is coming down the driveway and, and creating real problems all winter long. And it's a mess, uh, the edge of the road is a mess and the road was a mess and we, we've, we've, we've had to expend. You know, town resources to go out there and cut the ice and treat it and et cetera. Um, we, it needs, I think, needs to have some kind of neighborhood solution, you can't be looking at each lot individually. Needs a neighborhood solution and what that is, I'm not sure yet, but. You know.
But that's, that's a planning board issue, not a select board issue.
That is correct.
Right.
Get the words out of my mouth, sir.
Alright, so, you know, as, as I sit here right now, I see three different kinds of problems. One are the engineering problems about moving the water and maintaining the swell. The second is a legal problem about. What ownership means and what it means to have a reference to that right of way in the homeowner's deed. That's ambiguous and the third is, as a matter of policy. Um, the two select board members do not. Believe at this time that we should be using town right of way. Uh, to solve these water problems, so there's three different levels, there's three separate. Types of problems that, um. Are presenting themselves here. And, and I don't think any of them are going to get resolved tonight.
No, I, I think the. This has to go back for further, further research and analysis before it will come back to us. Cause we're, we're in no position to be making any decisions or giving any type of verbal okay's about anything tonight.
Uh, uh, understood, um. Just as a. Just to ask, i- if we were to eliminate the catch basins but still utilize a restored swale on the side of Meadow Road, would that? Be something you'd be potentially agreeable? Um, where we don't actually have any physical precast structures, we're, um, if we did something over land flow, but still, um, propose those swell improvements, would that be? Um. Something more desirable?
Uh, uh, to me, that's, all you're doing is moving the catch bases to the other side of the line and you've got the same. Issues in terms of using the town right away.
Right, I, a- any, any other o- option, you, this would need to go, uh, uh, and have be looked at the DPW director. And the planning board, I mean. Uh, you can pro- you can propose any, any number of alternatives, we're, we're not going to give any. Yay or nay or thumbs up to thumbs down about anything tonight.
Okay, no, I, no, I understand that, no, absolutely.
Sure, so you, you, we need to go back and do that, that research if there's some alternative. Solution that you'd like to come back to us with, but, uh. What I, what we see here doesn't seem to be working.
No, I, I understand completely.
Wh- where, where does the, oh, Todd, maybe you can, where, where does the planning board stand on all of this?
That was, um, well, given the fact that all this arose during the process of the scenic road and shade tree hearing. This particular item, the, for the drainage and so on, it hasn't been reviewed in, by the planning board within that capacity, all this spraying up. From their, uh, repeated visits during the shade tree and scenic road. And in service to the scenic bylaw, we didn't want to, uh, provide written consent for the removal of forty feet of stone wall along with some, almost two dozen trees. Um, given the fact that this is a precursor to that shared driver, driveway development, which has the burdens that you've already seen here. Which has the burdens that you've already seen here. So in service to preserving trees and stone wall, that's why we kept that scenic, that scenic road hearing open. But we wanted to, uh, to have the board of selectmen weigh in on the right-of-way issue before any, before that, uh, hearing closed.
I appreciate that, and I, I would assume that, that, that scenic road, uh, um. Hearing will, will remain open until there's some, some resolution or closure to this particular item.
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I don't believe there's anything else that we can really talk about this evening, I think, uh. People need to go back and, and, uh. Do some homework, uh, then come back to us, but, uh. Uh, I think we, we've discussed the, the various issues that, that you have before you and. Whether you, you can even legally do what you want to do from, from a deed transfer perspective.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you kindly, everyone, I appreciate, I appreciate you fielding this, I do.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it. So let us, let us know when you have something, and we'd be happy to put you on the schedule to come back and chat with us.
Alright, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, everyone, thank you.
Have a good night.
Very much.
Take care.
Thanks, Todd, appreciate it.
Always.
Okay, uh, next, next up is the, uh, town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All about you.
Well, yes, it, it, it literally is all about me tonight, um. I guess the first comment I'm going to make is, um, you know, we established these, uh, goals nearly a year ago. Um, I don't know what I was thinking when, uh, when I agreed to eleven goals. Uh, because I think that's a personal best for me, but, uh, I think it's been, I think it's been a very good year, and I'm going to take a walk through each of them. Um, number one, identify and implement interactive enhancements on our website to help increase public engagement. Um, we've done that in, in various ways, um. Not the least of which is, uh, specifically Jenny, uh, worked very hard to help, uh. The C, the COA com- completely remake their webpage with, uh. New, new, new colors, new artwork, uh, much easier to use for the public that's trying to access the, the webpage, uh, there's been. Uh, significant improvement, I would say, on that page, um. We do a number of, uh, enhancements as things pop up. You know, just, you know, not necessarily break fix, but we see an opportunity to adjust things and, um. And we do that without necessarily keeping a log of them, but, um. One, I think, major enhancement that has been done, has been done in the collector's office. And I'm going to talk just a little bit about that as well, um. So Michelle Carlisle, our tax collector, uh, as I'm sure both of you know. Uh, im- implemented a QR code on excise tax bills. To facilitate a customer's online payment, which brings obviously more people to the webpage. Um, the benefits of that where the customer can pay twenty-four seven, uh, the customer is less likely to require s- support. From the staff, um. Money movement and reporting is, is automated, and we're simply handling less cash, um. Beyond that, um, for the current excise tax cycle, as of March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. We've had a two-hundred-and-forty-eight percent increase in online payments. Um, last year at this time, we had four-hundred-and-fifty, this year we've had to, to date, one-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixteen. Um. And we, we believe that we're going to be seeing more and more, uh, residents signing up for online services. Um. And, um. Um, it, it has been a very, very favorable response, uh, so far there. And, um, what we're, what, uh, Michelle and, uh, some of the, uh, some of the. Support staff have been, have been testing is the ability to expand beyond, um. Um, excise tax bills, uh, to expand to, uh, uh. Real estate and personal property bills as, as well, um. And we have, uh, we, we have plans in place, um, to utilize the QR code on that as well, to bring even more people. To the webpage and try to streamline those processes as well. So I think we've made a lot of, uh, we've covered a lot of ground and made a lot of significant improvements in, in FY twenty-three in that area. Um. Secondly, uh, we, uh, continue to successfully manage capital planning process, including a three-year plan with identified funding sources. Obviously, you've both seen the one-year plan, um, and beyond that, I produced a, a five-year plan. And while, um, there are not identified funding sources for the out- outline years, I can tell you that. Um, I see no grants available for what we have in the pipeline. Uh, we will have, as you already saw earlier tonight, limited ARPA funds remaining. So for FY twenty-five and the outline years, we're looking at being back. You know, where we were before ARPA funds, which is essentially, um, funding items, uh, through free cash. Uh, through an article at town meeting, or potentially depending on what the item is of borrowing. So we're really back to where we were a couple of years ago, um, there will be some ARPA funds, um, but not. Not a ton of them, you know, we're utilizing most of them this year. Um, so it's really going to be free cash or, or borrowing, uh, in the, in the outline years, and if a grant does come up. That we're not aware of right now, that we haven't seen right now, obviously that will be explored. Uh. But our options are somewhat limited. Uh, present recommendations for ARPA-funded projects, you know, we've done that on an ongoing basis. As well as tonight, at, at next week's meeting, I'm sorry, at next month's meeting. I will be doing a presentation to you to ask you to formally vote on the ARPA funding, uh, for the, uh, projects that. Uh, that are in the FY twenty-four capital plan. You, you, you've seen the number, but I haven't asked you to vote on that yet. So the plan will be to do that at the next meeting. Uh, present and begin to implement long-range plan for improvements to town, town-owned buildings. Um, we did originally have some work, uh, targeted for FY twenty-three. But given the surprises we've had in the public safety building and the library and the town hall. Uh, in discussing with, with Randy, the work that we had, looked at trying to get done in twenty-three, we pushed out to twenty-four. But we did have some targeted, we did have a plan for that, it just, there's only so many cycles to manage so many things. So that, so that did get pushed into the FY twenty-four plan. Um. Present and, and begin to implement long-range plan for culvert repairs. That is literally the only thing on here that isn't complete, um, as you may recall. We received a grant from DEP that would, that allowed us to hire an intern to start doing the mapping and inventorying and that type of thing. For the culverts, uh, unfortunately, uh, DEP didn't get us the paperwork for the grant until August. And by the time that all got signed off, we had limited time left, uh, for our, uh, intern. So we'll have an intern coming back, hopefully the same intern, if not, uh, we will have an intern, uh, once college gets out. To resume the activity. So we'll be able to, to produce that plan next year for the culvert repairs, but we have nothing to work off of because the inventory is still. It's underway, but it, there's a lot of ground that still needs to be covered. Uh, we just had an unfortunate delay with DEP. Um, work with the advisory committee to assist a budget process for FY twenty-three. Uh, I believe I did that, worked very closely with Brian Boyle, uh, a- attended some of the advisory meetings and. Uh, certainly all the ones that I needed to be to, um, any of the department heads knew if they, if they wanted me to come, I, I would go. Uh, but they've, they're comfortable with, um, presenting their own budgets for the most part, so I, I tended to not go to those. But I have been, uh, working very closely with Brian, um, and, and have been to the year-end ones for the capital planning. And the discussion last week for, um, how we would deal with the budget as a whole. Um, so I've been very comfortable with that. Uh, managing any necessary modifications to current processes relative to COVID nineteen, if necessary. Really wasn't necessary, we had pretty solid processes in place, um. The pandemic has certainly wound down over FY twenty-three, but I, I didn't find it necessary to make any adjustments. Uh, uh, for COVID nineteen. Support the master plan committee as needed, uh, certainly have done that on an ongoing basis, have met with. Bob Romer, Brian Boyle, Patty Gurkin multiple times, um, and, uh, and helped with, um. Also advocating, uh, for the, uh, seventy thousand dollars for the, uh. Board to contribute towards the master plan process in case we didn't get the, the, uh, grant which we got. So we're able to reallocate that, that seventy thousand dollars, but, uh. That was money well-spent by the board, which enabled us to, to, to get a consultant that, uh, we otherwise up to that point had not been able to. Uh, obtain any consulting services, um. Examine the, uh, interdepartmental processes and apply synergistic improvements, um. In a nutshell, what that means is we have greatly expanded our use of viewpoint internally. Uh, it's a, it, when we first got viewpoint, we ve- really viewed it as a permitting tool. And how we could make things, you know, e- easier for the inspectors and for the public to, to pull permits, um. We've used it in several different areas, uh, it's, it's become, it's made us a lot more versatile. Uh, we, uh, are using it for street sign requests. We're using it to automate, uh, our, our turnover processes to make sure the turnovers are, are, are cleaner. Um, and Parks and Rec have been using it quite a bit to help, uh, help track programs and, and collection of funds and that type of thing. So it has made us more efficient and will continue to do so. As we've learned with, as we've gotten more into viewpoint, and we've learned more about it. Um, we're seeing more opportunities to continue expanding the use. So it's, it's a lot more versatile than it was, than we thought it was when we obtained it. Um, and as a reminder, we did obtain view, the, the software and the, uh, tablets for the, uh, inspectors, uh, through a grant. So viewpoint was, uh, not an expense that the town paid for, this has all been paid for through, through grant funding. Um, so again, very successful there. Um, number ten, begin a feasibility study of a rear ag- uh, egress from the Florence Sorder campus. Uh, I've been out there a few times, I've walked the site with Rebecca, um. The concept in my head last year was that, um. There were likely two opportunities, one to go out on Berlin Road, another to go out on Water Aquatic, um. I have since, uh, Rebecca has shown me, um, that really there is, there, A, there is no way to get out to Water Aquatic without either. Either going through wetlands, there's a lot of wetlands there, or somehow, um, um, infringing on, uh, Memorial Field. Or around there. So Water Aquatic truly is not, uh, what I would call a feasible alternative. But if you look at access to Berlin Road, um, there are two. Uh, as I see it, options to get onto Berlin Road, um, one would be, it would be a shorter span, but covering, um. Um, covering a bit more of, uh. Of a, what, what I, what's the word I'm looking for, cup, covering, um, having a longer span. Um, I mean, having more, more, more height that we have to span, or a section option which would have, um. Less wetlands to cross, but it's basically, uh, both, both avenues would, would go out onto Berlin Road. Um, obviously, there's been no money allocated for engineering for this. Um, so since it's a feasibility study, um. My determination is it is certainly feasible, I mean, and yes, you could say, well, anything's feasible with enough money. But that being said, um, what, what is realistic as well as feasible, and I think we have two options. To get onto Berlin Road, which we would not require, we would not, um. We would not need an easement from any, an- anyone, if we can cross town-owned land, uh, I am pursuing. A, a possibility of funding for engineering to take this to the next step. I haven't concluded that process yet, so I don't want to create false hope, but I think we have a, I think we have a realistic opportunity to obtain some funding. That would allow us to, to get, um, get this engineered, um. When I've looked at trying to access federal money to, um, to do the engineering. Uh, the feedback that I've gotten from Congresswoman Trahan's office is. Where, where the federal grants are now, and, and they don't use the term shovel-ready anymore. But, uh, they want to see that work has already, there's already been engineering work done. Uh, and that, that work has been performed, and now we can take it to the next level if we have, um. If we have, uh, funds to do the project that we're ready to implement them, um. My feedback has been that this is not an insignificant amount of engineering, you're probably looking at. At least a hundred thousand dollars, my guess would be, to engineer this, and I think. It, I'm not comfortable making a recommendation to the board at this point, that we, for instance, use a hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds. For a project that may never go forward, um, you know, I would have a serious concern about that, which is why I'm, I'm trying to. Pick every tree and bush that I can to try to find some money to, to perform engineering, um, and as I said, um. I haven't got a final answer on, on that yet, but I'm feeling optimistic. So I'm hoping to be able to expand on that, but the feasibility is, is, it is essentially done. Uh, it, it, it is feasible, I think we have a couple of options, and I think we would need an engineer to tell us which makes the most sense.
Ron, have you gotten any feedback from the general public on this idea?
Um, I've gotten minimal feedback, but when I, when I discuss it with people. Uh, I'm not so sure, I'm not sure how many people are really aware that this is being looked at. I will tell you that. The superintendent of schools is very excited. And when, when I have discussed it with people, and I've asked, and they've asked me why I'm looking at it, uh, it's really, a- as, as you know. It's a, it's a safety issue, um, and it not just, uh, uh, not solely for. If we had, uh, a major event at a school, you know, whether it's an, an intruder of some sort or whatever. Uh, but that's certainly what was in my head when I first started talking about this, but also. We've only got that one means of egress over Mechanic Street, we, we could have some sort of a, um. Uh, a natural disaster, some sort of a, we could have a tornado come through. And trees come down all across Mechanic, all across, um, you know, that whole area, and we've got no way to get kids out of there.
Yeah.
Uh, literally no way, so, uh, so aside from, and, and as I said, you know, an intruder was what was in my head. As to try to make it a safer campus, and I, I'd like to think that will help us open up some funding. Um, to actually implement this, if it gets that, that, that far. When I do discuss this with people, people get very excited, they're very. Very supportive of the idea, and would like to see it, uh, go to the next level. Um, and then finally, um, have discussions with the board of trustees of the library to make the library meeting room more accessible. For regularly scheduled municipal public meetings, um, I, I have met with the trustees, I, I've spoken one-on-one with the chair. And also, with, I've met with the board, um, the first step in, in, in the process was we have, uh. We had approval to have the caucus held, um, earlier th- this month. Um, and the board of trustees are working on a final policy that will, uh, allow. For regularly scheduled meetings, Monday night through Thursday night. And, um, I've been told that once they complete the policy, it will be communicated to me. Uh, for my, for my, uh, input, and then hopefully implemented. So we had the first tangible results of this, as I said, with the caucus, and the trustees have been, uh, I think, very. Very favorable in, in wanting to put something in place for Monday night through Thursday night. So I, I thought it was a productive meeting that I had with them. And then lastly, and it's not on this list, but you know from several of the updates that I've given, um, I've done a lot of work along with, um. Uh, staff, of course, on the Derby Field project. And Derby Field is not on my goals, but I, I saw an opportunity. Um, that first arose when we were negotiating with Wood Partners for Five Eighty Main Street. And they contributed fifty thousand dollars towards the improvement of Derby Field. And once we started digging into that, we, we saw what the opportunities are. Um, as recently as this morning, we had a team meeting, the, uh, MVP grant is now, uh, application is out. And they're going, they're, they're taking applications until May fourth. We've got, uh, I think, a really good, uh, grant submittal to go in, um. I think when all is said and done, we're going to be requesting approximately. Approximately six hundred thousand dollars. In grant funding, there's a twenty-five percent match. That needs to be done, but between what we've got from Wood Partners. And staff time, which counts for in kind. Matches. I think we, I think we're going to be able to cover most, if not all, of the of the matching funds. So if I'm, if if we're successful and I'm correct. We we could pull off this Derby Field upgrade with little to no funding. From the, or little to no funding, additional funding from the taxpayers. Which I, which I think would be wonderful, so. Having walked walked through this, I I feel it's been a very productive year, I feel good about this year. The only one that wasn't completed was the one, the inventory for the. For the culverts, and we just haven't been able to get that 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 inventory completed yet, but I. I'm happy to take any comments or questions that that you have.
No, I think Don has been a very good year. A lot of things have had moved forward, and you know, it's certainly not. Not for a lack of effort on the culvert stuff, it's not, it's.
Yeah, there's there've been a lot of things accomplished with with, you know, it's worth saying with minimal controversy. So that's that's good. People have been working together cooperatively, and the results have been good.
Now, the the staff works extremely well together as far as Derby Field goes. I have to keep on saying, Rob, Rob Frieswick, who's the facilities manager for the school district. Has been an excellent resource, he he gives whatever time we ask to meet with us. And and share his expertise, which is significant, so. I I and I've shared that with the superintendent, that Rob, Rob has been a. A significant player on our team.
Well, I I just want to say, well, one, you know, you've done, you've done a, you've done a great job. I also want to put a plug in, we have a great. Not only town hall staff, but everybody who works for the town does a fabulous job. And they they all should be commended, and. You know, and I think in large part, it's 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 due to you, Don, for for your management of 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 the staff, so. Thank you very much for for everything you do for us.
Thank you, Stan, I appreciate that.
All right, now get back to work, Don.
Break is over.
We're done, go back to work. All right, if nothing else. Thank you, Don, we'll go back to select board business, any public service announcements?
Just there is still opportunities to tour the high school, if you want to get the insider's view of what that the physical condition of that building is. You will have access to parts of the building that are normally off limits to the public. The tour that's available is at ten o'clock this Saturday morning, you can. Enroll, there's still spots available, you can enroll for it by going to the. Website for the high school building committee and clicking on the calendar. For the tour at ten AM on Saturday.
Bob, if I may, I I would want to confirm that on the website, because I believe. The the two tours, there was going to be a ten and a twelve o'clock tour.
Only the ten is available, they've they've been consolidated into the ten o'clock.
Okay, great, I I I thought that, in case the public was confused, I just wanted to point that out.
No, I I only refer to the ten o'clock tour.
Right, and there and there is no tour on the twenty ninth of April, that's been canceled.
That's correct. That's been moved to September.
Yeah, your description of it, Bob, is like historic New England, where you get to see the houses and. Never before seen portions of these historic.
Well, with with any luck, this will be the last chance to see any of this stuff. Things go.
All right, well, and that's great, any future agenda items? I I don't have any for this evening. All right, next up is the approval of the fifteenth annual procession of the cross from Harvard to Bolton on Friday, April seventh, twenty twenty-three. We have some information in our packets, I didn't think it was necessary to have the folks in the church to come in, it's something that they do every. Jenny, assuming the chief has been informed and is hunky dory with this.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I move to approve the fifteenth annual procession of the cross from Harvard to Bolton. On Friday, April seventh, twenty twenty-three.
I will second that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
When we said, when we told Don to get back to work.
Yeah, come on, let's go.
Thank you.
Slacking off already. Okay. Next up is discussion and vote on the remaining ATM warrant articles, I'm not sure what we have left to do, but let's.
You just have Article three to vote, now that you have the numbers, the final numbers in it.
Alrighty, well, I I guess we have the numbers. Got my warrant up here, so and anybody got any questions, otherwise, if those are the good numbers, let's just. Let's go for it.
I move to approve, recommend approval of Article three.
Oh, no. Signify by saying aye, aye?
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye. Okay. I don't, and maybe I was just zoned out, but did we ever? Vote to approve the select board statement, because I don't remember us doing that the last meeting.
It's funny that you say that, because when I did the minutes, you did not approve it. But I had a memory that perhaps we did it in an earlier meeting, but I might be mistaken for the annual report.
I, yeah, we did it for the annual report, we didn't do it for the statement.
Yeah, you guys breezed by it.
Well. I guess at this point, we have to vote to close the warrant too tonight, don't we?
Yes, you do.
All right, well, in that case, I move to approve the select board statement.
I'll second that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
My Saki.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty.
Should I move to close the warrant, or do we need to have another step?
No, I think, I think your next step would 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 be to vote to to close and sign the warrant.
I move to close the warrant for the annual town meeting.
I will second that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
My Saki.
Aye.
Thank you, and I will let you guys know when that's ready to be signed, because I need to put in today's vote. So don't come in until you've heard from me.
Okey dokey.
She'll be busy working.
Uh, next up is to approve the bills and the payroll warrants, W twenty-three dash nineteen and W twenty-three dash nineteen A. So I'll second that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
My Saki.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we have no regular session minutes, but we will be approving some minutes in executive.
That's correct.
There you go. So next up is an executive session. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty-eight, twenty-one, A, Section three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamsters Union. Local one seventy, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or position of the board of selectmen. And the chair so declared. And to approve executive session minutes. We will be, after that, we will be coming out of executive session to potentially execute the collective bargain agreement between the town of Bolton. And the Teamsters Union local one seventy for July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Roll call, Sikansky?
Aye.
My Saki.
Aye.
Thank you.